I call this meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order to work session July 25th, 2017. Adam Clark, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody? Ms. Sumis? Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mayor Rowe?
Here. And ladies and gentlemen, we're honored to have Colonel Jason Kelly, the district commander of the local Army Corps of Engineers District, the Norfolk District. Used to be called the District Engineer. And I'd like to embarrass you a little bit. Colonel Kelly is not only a great leader, but he's a very learned man. He's a 1994 graduate of the United States Military Academy at West Point, has three master's degrees, one from the George Institute of Technology, one from the National Defense University, and one from the U.S. Army War College. And all of those are very tough schools to get into and very tough schools to get a graduate degree from. As a commander, he has led units in the Army from a platoon to a brigade. You don't become a brigade commander unless you really are a good, good leader.
Much too kind, sir.
We're blessed to have you here. I think that your presence in Hampton Roads has and is making a difference. And thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
I would, yes, sir. First, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Patton, Councilman, thank you for allowing us to present this evening. Definitely honored to be here. And our purpose this evening is to share a little bit about who we are, let you know that we're here for you, and we want to add value to this community because I personally think that there's more we can do here. And I have with me this evening the Chief of our Water Resources Division, Mr. Greg Steele. I have the Chief of our Planning Branch, Ms. Susan Connor, and the Chief of our Operations Branch, Mr. Keith Lockwood. I'll also highlight that Keith is a major player in our outreach program because our district, we have six priorities, one of which is to lead and be engaged locally, reasonably, and vertically within the enterprise. And, you know, I know Craney Island, Dr. Patton talked to me a lot, and George, about some of the mosquitoes, and I think we got that under control. We're doing better there. But I want to do more in the schools with Churchland High School, Elementary and Middle School right there. I think that we have a real gem in Craney Island. We're working closely to do more there. And my goal is to create some engineers that'll join our organization and stay right here in Hampton Roads and help us continue to do what we're doing. So I'd like to extend that as an outreach so for the council members, happy to come to your respective areas and present and share what we're doing and certainly avail ourselves to you for future opportunities within the local populace here in Portsmouth. This evening, I'd like to take a few moments just to talk a little bit about it. And I'll start first with UCASE Enterprise. I'll talk a little bit about what our organization does. I'm one of 43 district commanders in the Army Corps of Engineers. And I like to just live there with the UCASE vision. We engineer solutions to our nation's toughest challenges. I'm blessed to swim in, I guess, a river of intelligence. I have professionals in our organization. There's not a problem that comes in that I don't think we can access the right level of expertise to solve it. And that is available to the citizens here in Portsmouth as well. But that is the UCASE vision. And we do that by virtue of a professional workforce. The Enterprise has in excess of 33,000 civilians and soldiers. Most of that is a civilian workforce. That's also the case for my district. We're a little over 350 strong. Of that, only five are uniformed officers. And so I'm proud to report that we have professionals, civilians, that really come in every day and give everything they have for not only this local community, but for the Commonwealth and for the country. 242 years of service. So every year, the Army has a birthday, the Engineer Branch, we're right there with them. As an engineer officer, I was commissioned an engineer out of West Point, and we are one of, we are the only branch, I should say, one of, that we have our own buttons. And so I'm proud. So when you see an officer with engineer castles, a little nugget, you can ask them about their buttons because if they're properly attired, they engineer castles. But 242 years, and it is right there in line with the Army. We've been serving the country for 242 years, and we're going to continue to do so. And this slide just shows some of the highlights, and there, I mean, I could spend time on this slide and talk about some of the many things that the Army Corps of Engineers is involved in. But I'll move to the next and highlight one that is of the utmost importance and certainly here of great import, and that's national security. We have, right now, deployed, so that civilian workforce, many go forward. So in addition to the soldiers of the United States Army that support our contingency missions, we have civilians that go forward and support the forward fight. In fact, our senior civilian of our organization, Mr. Mike Darrell, is currently in Afghanistan, working out of Kabul, supporting the mission and the soldiers in Afghanistan. The organization, and again, I'm talking the Enterprise, is reasonably aligned. So I am a member of the North Atlantic Division. Our headquarters is in Brooklyn, New York. So I have, once a quarter, to go and spend a week in Brooklyn. I've gotten very familiar with Bay Ridge and Fort Hamilton. In our division, Baltimore, New England, the Europe District, Philadelphia, New York are comprised of North Atlantic Division. And we sort of support UCOM, so all of the European Command. And so right now, all that's happening in Poland, a resurgent Russia and all that's happening, when you see in the news, soldiers, and as we assess how we will house rotational forces, that's happening out of North Atlantic Division. South Atlantic Division does a lot in the South, in South America, and, you know, Transatlantic Division out of Winchester does a lot in the Middle East and the Pacific, obviously in the Pacific Rim. We have, there's a way the Enterprise is aligned. I'm partial, obviously, to Norfolk as a Norfolk District, but we are a full-service district. We have a military mission, civil works, interagency work that we do, and I'll go into greater depth there. But this organization does quite a bit. So when you see the Army Corps of Engineers, this is the Enterprise and the divisions that we have there. Our missions, military, so here in the Commonwealth, responsible for military construction at Fort Eustis, Lee, Pickett, A.P. Hill, Langley Air Force Base, and that's all under our military mission. Interagency work with NASA. Arlington National Cemetery, we're also responsible for all construction there, and that's also, we treat it as an interagency mission. Civil works, all that we do with the Port of Virginia, that falls under our navigation mission. We also have a flood risk management mission and aquatic ecosystem restoration mission that falls under our civil works. Contingency, really that national security mission that I mentioned in those that go forward. Geospatial, so we have a capability, in fact, for our division. We are the center of expertise, actually, for the Enterprise, or for our division, I'm sorry. But a great geospatial capability, lots of, can produce some maps. You'd be really impressed with some of the capabilities that we have there in the district. And then research and development. So we have, within the Enterprise, several research and development facilities, none more important than the Engineer Research and Development Center in Vicksburg, Mississippi, extreme capability there that they have. Our website, definitely encourage you all to visit there. We, this is the place where we post a lot of what we're doing. So at times, there's interest in what's the status of a particular project. For some, for the council members, some other developers in your respective areas may have questions regarding our permits and the status. This is also always posted. And we also have, on the permitting, we have a regulator of the day that you can get a phone number for and call and answer. But these phone numbers, we will most certainly take the calls because it is my intent to be accessible, available, and active in all that we do. Within the Commonwealth, there are five districts servicing the Commonwealth. Our boundaries here are by watershed. So when I go to DC for congressional visits, I try and be mindful of all that's happening. But as it pertains to civil works, we speak only of what you see there, and that reddish color is the Norfolk District. Nashville, Huntington, Wilmington, and Baltimore also have civil works missions here in the Commonwealth. But for this particular locale, it's all the Norfolk District, and we do our best to serve as the one door to the core for the entire Commonwealth. Little bit different on our regulatory mission. So we have offices in each one of these dots here, symbolic of a place where we have members of our organization. Green being the military posts, outpost, and resident offices. Civil, we have Gathright Dam in Covington, Virginia, that we're responsible for. And then our regulatory mission, unlike the civil works, we're responsible for the entire Commonwealth as it pertains to regulatory and the permitting actions here in the Commonwealth. This is something I really like to highlight. This is a place where I think we can get active here in Portsmouth. The Continued Authorities Program, and we have a few pamphlets that will leave, but Congress has granted the Army Corps of Engineers some authorities to get after some smaller projects that we can turn relatively quickly. And we don't do that in many instances. Most of what we do starts with a study, and you have to work very hard to get a study authorization. And once you have that, you then got to fight to get a new start, and there's only so many of those. But once we have that, we can commence a study, and we have some of those going here in Hampton Roads. But following that study authorization, you then have to seek some construction authorization, and then you're fighting for appropriation in dollars. This lets us cut to the chase. This particular authority lets us identify something that needs to be done, and it could be in these categories. The flood risk management, which we've identified here in yellow, our navigation mission in red, and aquatic ecosystem restoration in green. But these are missions that we can turn in a hurry. An example I'll use, along the James River, in Newport News, there is a bank that erosion observed, the local citizens, you know, hey, what can you do? So following a meeting with the city manager, we went out, observed, had a federal interest determination, decided that we could do something there. We're now in motion. And so there's a cost share generally, but it's 65, 35, right, generally for most of those. Is that right?
It's fair enough for construction.
For construction, 65, 35. But it's an opportunity for us to get something done in a hurry. I had an example in Suffolk where a member of a church, it was a historic church, she thought that grave sites were being, erosion being impacted. In this particular case, we went out, assessed, we were not able to do anything under these authorities, but based on our assessment, we were then able to go back to the city of Suffolk and talk about what could be done. And I was excited about that, not because we were able to solve the problem, but I felt that it was a great example of the Core providing value to the local community, being more than this building downtown Norfolk, and folks wondering, what is it that we actually do? So though it didn't result in what I hoped it would, because it was my desire that it would fall under, but after assessing, it didn't. But I think there's a lot of good that came from that relationship. And I think it was also additive to the city of Suffolk because they too participated in the exploration and identification of what could be done. I think that there are opportunities like that here in Portsmouth that we would welcome the opportunity to be a part of. Talked most of this already, but quick to implement, three years from study to construction, limited in scope, so these are not very large projects. There is a cost share there, but there's a limit. So we're not going to get too elaborate in terms of what we're trying to do. This authority forces us to stay inside of something that is achievable, something that's feasible. And the beauty of this one is you don't need additional congressional authorization. We already have what we need to get active, and that is a really big deal because usually, you know, even if you're successful with a study authorization, having a money allocated is a different advocacy that's required. Even when folks believe that this is something we should do, it's sometimes hard when you're competing nationally to get that authorization, and that's not the case here. Just more, I guess I said 65, 35, but it depends on which one we're using. And I'm sorry, this is the planning assistance to states. So moving, this is another one where we can look at something that's of interest, and this one is not 65, 35, this one's 50, 50. But it's another opportunity that we can help with Susan's staff to study some challenges that the city is facing, but it's another one that we can get started in a hurry and not have to go back to Congress. And here are some of the items or study areas that we could pursue. And I'm not privy to all that could potentially be of interest, but my goal is to make you aware of these things. And so as you look at this city and think about things that we could do together, perhaps there's some areas here that we could find an opportunity to pursue and certainly welcome that. This last slide, and I was hoping to get to questions with this one, but it's one of my favorite slides because the folks on this slide work in our district, but they live in this community. These are folks, so what we're talking about doing together is really for us. Though I am transient in my duties and in the position I currently hold, the folks that really run and lead our district live in Portsmouth. They live in the surrounding locales and are as interested and as committed to doing collateral good here as anyone in this room. And so my, I guess, presence tonight, I hope to convey a desire to get involved. I hope to convey a desire to be a part of what's happening in the city of Portsmouth. And I think that there's more we can do together, and certainly with our Continued Authorities Program, our planning assistance to states, something that we can certainly get after in a hurry. So pending any questions you may have, that concludes what I wanted to share this evening.
Lisa.
My question is, I guess selfish maybe, I'm always concerned about the minority and women that are involved in your organization, and how do you recruit, and what do we look like, what do our hidden figures look like?
So we need more.
Yeah.
There's absolutely no doubt about it. I think that some of the things that we can do in terms of outreach, we need to do more. We have certainly some folks that are passionate about minority recruitment. We are a designated advancing minorities in engineering partner. I came here and spoke at, is it the STAR?
Starbase.
Starbase. We participated, we set up a table and had a chance to engage young men and women on a Saturday to talk about opportunities in Army Corps of Engineers. We host events, we participate, the Nauticus had a Women in STEM session a few months back. So we need to do more. But I will tell you that if you, here in the local community, are in search of women of color, engineers, we got it all in our district, and we have folks that are active and passionate about sharing. And that's true, we've turned down no opportunities to share. So ma'am, if you have one, and Keith leads most of these engagements, we will most certainly come out. And we do so with volunteers. So we have every month a community outreach meeting where volunteers from our organization come, and I ask folks, if there's something at your church, a civic group you're a member of, some community group, we add it to the agenda. Keith leads this session. We'll figure out if there's someone that's interested in being a part of it, and we're able to find volunteers. We've judged engineering contests at various elementaries. My goal, and I will tell you, I showed the slide, it said 242 years. If we don't encourage the youth, if we don't build our bench, another 242 will be in danger for us to be able to do that. So I think your question, a worthy one, one that we're mindful of and one that we're certainly working on, but there's much work to be done.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the Army Corps being our partner in helping us with mosquito control, reference Craney Island. Can you expound on what is actually being done over there? I know there, with the dredge material and with the fissures that result when they dry out, that's been a source of a problem for a number of years. Certainly got quite critical a month ago.
Yes, sir.
Better now. What actually was different now compared to earlier this spring?
I think, and you are absolutely correct. I'll begin with the quality of life here in Portsmouth. As I said on this slide, these are the folks that I'm talking about are here experiencing those mosquitoes as well. So, you know, they let us know, not only here, and the citizens, and Dr. Patton and I had a chance to talk, it was rough. And it was a result of really environmental conditions. I think warm winter, very rainy period here as we went, you know, April, May, June. I think the period that you're talking, we were active, but it just wasn't enough in terms of what we were raining. So treatments, I think we had, when I talked to Dr. Patton a while back, I think we had mid to late June were several treatments, and we had a larvicide treatment, and we've had subsequent treatments in early July, another one like June 28th, the last week in June, and then three since we talked. So I think what we're seeing is sort of drying out and sort of catching up. So much of what was being experienced, actions were being taken. We discussed some things we could do in terms of maintenance, and we had some good dialogue on capping and some ditching and some things. So I believe we were doing what we were always doing, but it was bad. And I think that what you're experiencing now is the tamping and tempering as a result of the actions we've taken. I don't know, Keith, anything to add on?
Sure. I actually did, I don't have the slides up here, but I have some of those treatments there. If you remember me and Keith Lockwood from years ago.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so you can take one and pass it around.
We first had a mosquito task force a long time ago.
Yes, so I actually, when we first did a mosquito task force, when I first became an employee of the district in 2002, it's sort of when that was ramping up. And at that time, we were operating under a 1996 environmental assessment and really didn't have a great pest management plan. And so working with George and as well as the U.S., the Navy, we did a supplemental environmental assessment, and we developed a pest management. So through the years, we had a three-pronged approach, the source reduction, which is kind of eliminate habitat, and then larvicide, trying to attack the mosquitoes while they're in their larval form in the water. And then adult control, which is sort of that last resort, but necessary, also gets some of those adults that are going to emerge. Because the goal is to kind of reduce that population. Colonel Kelly is absolutely correct. Every once in a while, and the last time was 2012, nature kicks us in the teeth and get really warm winter and a lot of rain, and you schedule treatments, and the rain just, you can't treat when it's raining. So sometimes it delays that period where you can be proactive with the treatments. And especially with the wintertime, if it's warm, most of that egg base overwinters. And in the spring, when it rains and rains a lot, all those eggs, multiple generations, hatch out. And so you're kind of trying to play catch-up. And so what we did in June is several treatments for larvicide in those, those cracks that were developed over the winter with the cells drying out of the dredge material. And then also attacked with an adult control over the whole site as well as neighboring Churchland area and the Navy SEAL depot. And in coordination with George and his team, you got the cities doing spraying efforts at the same time. So there's a lot of coordination there as well as monitoring. We're relying on the city's numbers for, on their adult trap numbers to help us schedule when those treatments, and it's been, it's been a great partnership. And in many years, pretty quiet, but every once in a while, you do get knocking the teeth. And to react to that, to be better suited for next year, we're actually going to be doubling our contract capacity for both aerial larvicide and adulticide. So it enables us to be forceful in the spring, but still have contract capacity in the fall when you may have another, a warm and wet fall, and you still have mosquitoes. So in addition to what Colonel Kelly said, we have, right now, ready to go. We were going to treat this week, but the monitoring showing is just pretty quiet out there. And so we're ready to go next week if we need to do larvicide based on what we're seeing in the water. And then the Air Force is scheduled to come in. You know, they do, they do training exercises and will request if we need, and so we're saying, yes, you know, come when you can. And so right now, they're scheduled for next week and maybe one other time in August. And we're prepared to do additional adult treatments too going into the fall. So I think we've got it under control, and really, it's about, I think we have scheduled a meeting in February to see what the natural conditions are looking like for the 2018 season so we can be proactive with our treatments earlier, like in, even April, frankly, because March was almost like May this year.
It's had a positive impact. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to also thank, you know, George. And usually, when I go to meetings, and folks refer to us as the Core, you know, but George knows exactly who he was talking to at the Core, right? So his partnership is good, and definitely, we're doing this together. One of the things I wish we would have done a little bit better this year, though, is convey to you, convey, so that you could convey to the local community all that was happening. I think we did it a little bit after the fact in terms of communicating all that's going on. I think there's some messaging that can be done better. And in order to get after that a little bit more so that I can share, and city managers agreed to, you know, let us come up, we're going to, we're going to schedule some meetings and meet quarterly so that we're talking about all that's happening so that as things start to come up, I'm able to be responsive to what Dr. Patton is hearing and with the staff. And if there's some course correction needed back at our office, we're able to address it before. So I think we'll be better next year. There's some definite lessons learned from this year.
Colonel Kelly?
Yes.
Before we move on to something else, I want to make sure that my colleagues, if you all want an explanation, watch, you see, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Everybody okay with this? Other questions? Sea level rise.
Yes, sir.
How's the Core involved in that study here in Hampton Roads?
So, so that's one of our strategic initiatives right now. I think that what we're doing right now is titled the Norfolk Coastal Storm Risk Management Study. But I would tell you that it is an interim response. We fully recognize that the water knows no boundary because we have man-made boundaries that divide the cities. We acknowledge that that is not sufficient for all that needs to be done here in Hampton Roads. That study that we're undertaking and then moving out with the city of Norfolk is really a derivative of the North Atlantic Coast Comprehensive Study, which was a result of Hurricane Sandy. So there's a lot of dollars, and Norfolk was ready. And so we have embarked on a study. We've got three years to do it. We're almost halfway now. It's a $3 million study, and it's three levels of integration to, you know, us, the division that I spoke of at Fort Hamilton and Headquarters UCASE. Later next month, Susan will present what we believe are alternatives for the city that they will consider. But we truly believe that it's interim. And so right now, when I think about rising seas, it's in its entirety, so not just the sea level rise, but we have to deal with subsidence. We have to deal with the recurrent flooding that plagues this area. We're mindful of that. I think that there are things we ought to start talking about because there are certainly members of the General Assembly that are interested in being champions for subsequent studies that we think we have to take on. Not exactly sure where we'll go next, but Portsmouth is without doubt in that zone of consideration that must be addressed and talked about. I think that there's definitely appetite. I know that Governor McAuliffe has expressed interest in wanting to have a study. I know that Delegate Stahle has been a champion, certainly Representative Scott speaks often to me and attends all of the sessions. I'll speak in a couple of weeks at Resilient Virginia where this will be a subject, and one of my talking points will be what next? How does the Commonwealth? How does the Commonwealth advance what we were able to do? Because I think that what we're doing with the city of Norfolk is going to be foundational, not just for this region, but for other coastal communities. And so I think that now the time is ripe to think about how, in conjunction with the Commonwealth and with, you know, some of the national initiatives on coastal communities that Portsmouth gets involved and gets under that tent. I think we have to talk about that and be a part of that.
If I remember correctly, in 1971, the tidal gates that were constructed in Norfolk off of bush as you come around Waterside was a joint project between the Corps and the city of Norfolk. Two questions. When do you see a project like that in the future for cities like Portsmouth? And second, what's the likelihood of Congress funding a project like that?
I believe, so I'm going to answer, Jason Kelly says yes and yes. Because.
We understand what you're saying.
And here's why I say that. I think that the sort of recognition that the threat we're facing requires some response. What I think you'll see, and with the Norfolk Coastal Storm risk management study, we're going to have some recommendations. And some of those recommendations will include sluice gates and some other things we'll be doing, natural nature-based features. So what you'll have are recommendations on the shelf that could then be funded. The reason why I answer yes to cities like Portsmouth is I think if we are successful in the study, successful in figuring out what could be done, the could be, might be a similar gate that would then be on the shelf for funding. I'm not prepared to say that funds are readily available, but I do know that if we don't perform the study, if we don't have the authorization and have something on the shelf, the answer to your question, sir, will be no. But I think that right now, there's recognition that we've got to look at what could be done. And that's really what's driving Susan's workload right now from, in the planning community on the recognition that we've got to start taking a look. I think that the cost share will continue to be a challenge because once we have these authorizations, then they're, you know, $3 million studies. I think that we're going to have to get creative. And as an example, in Hampton, I don't know that the city of Hampton will have, you know, the 1.5, but maybe there's a combination on the peninsula that we can figure out how to do. I don't know how, we've got to work through that. But I do believe that such studies will yield projects that could, and I think in time, certainly be under serious consideration for funding. All right, bail me out.
I was actually just going to add one thing was another reason that we started the city of Norfolk study earlier is we have a study authority. So we don't currently have a study authority for a large study here, but the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission did submit a study authority request last year, which would include this city. It's for the entire coastal Virginia area. So we're waiting on Congress to act on that now. So if Congress acts on that and gives us a study authority for all of coastal Virginia, we would then have an authority that we could move forward with one of these large studies.
What's the estimated cost of that?
Three million. So it'd be three million to one and a half million federal and one and a half million non-federal. So, and that could be specific to the city or the city as a regional study might want to work with other localities.
And so this is another thing we put forward to the Commonwealth, because another way to do it is if you had recognition, you know, dollars within the assembly and say, hey, we need to look, we need to better understand what's happening in Portsmouth. There are ways to do, so I don't, that is yet to be answered, the non-federal cost share piece of it. I think that there's creativity that has yet to be explored and how best to do that.
So that we don't end up with a bunch of disparate studies, is there an invisible Adam Smith hand that is coordinating all this? Would that be you?
I think it's HRPDC, right?
So the Corps has been working with HRPDC to try and come up with a regional approach. And certainly we've presented at the HRPDC in several different forums and asked for feedback on a regional approach. So we can, we have strategies where we look at the highest risk and vulnerability to say, you know, those are the areas where we should act first. But in the end, it often does come down to the non-federal sponsor. So who is willing to partner with the Corps? Whenever we have a locality that steps up and says, we have the cost share to partner with you, then we can advocate moving forward with a study.
Third questions or comments? Colonel Kelly? Thank you so much. You came July 16th, 2015.
Yes, sir.
Can we get you extended?
I'd welcome that because I told him that the fact that I am scheduled to depart is a thing that we won't talk about. So I told him that at some point, there's a ceremony that they're going to schedule out in front of our headquarters that they're going to have to force me to go to. This is my 24th year in the Army. This has been by far the best job I've ever had. I've never had an opportunity to interact on meaningful subjects, to partner and have an opportunity to make a difference. I've loved it, and the folks that I'm able to do it with, none better. So they're going to have to blow me up out of here, sir, but I'll take you up on it. If you can coordinate and figure out a way to give me the stay, I'm in. Thank you.
And thank your staff too for coming. Dr. Patton?
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. This evening, City Attorney Solomon Ashby will review the draft language to the proposed dog tethering ordinance. This is a response to City Council's request to staff to bring back language on proposed ordinance change for City Council's consideration for no unattended tethering. To provide contacts for this presentation, in March 2017, the international organization dedicated to protecting the rights of all animals, known as PETA, shared their concerns with the city's current dog tethering ordinance. On May 22nd, Chief Chapman presented an overview of the city's dog tethering ordinance and enforcement. The Police Department and City Attorney's Office have reviewed the city's existing ordinance along with studying ordinances on dog tethering from cities across the region. An outcome for tonight's discussion is City Council's determination of the proposed ordinance. Present this evening is Assistant Chief Graylin Williams and Captain Tom Bozeman to answer the questions related to enforcement of the ordinance, if there are any. Mr. Ashby?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of Council. Tonight, we're going to bring before you a proposed amendment to a portion of Portsmouth City Code, Section 4.9, which is the standards for keeping animals and household pets. As Dr. Patton has mentioned, there was the one section, Section F, that you as council members asked that we bring back to you with a definition of the term "unattended" for your consideration. And that is what we bring back before you today. We have brought back some proposed language that provides an opportunity for the Police Department to investigate matters once they're presented, ascertain the situation in force with their exercise of discretion, without any exorbitant expense of time or commitment, and also to address any potential issues of evidentiary proof that might be required in court. And so tonight, this is your opportunity to look at the proposed language and chime in on how you wish to move forward. The definition and the language that's been presented has three subparts that attempt to define the term "unattended." Again, those three subparts are options. We believe they provide a reasonable period of time for the officers to act, a reasonable manner, an area for them to review in order to enforce this standard, and we think it's in line with a urban setting. So let me just go over this briefly. Pointer? No, I'm just going to take them through this. You'll see the strikeout, the current Section F reads, "It shall be unlawful for any dog to be tethered more than consecutive three hours during any 24-hour period." You all will recall when Chief Chapman came forward, that presented a bit of a problem in that either the citizen or the police officer would have to maintain themselves at the property for a three-hour period of time in order to go forth. And so we've offered some alternative language to define the term "unattended." And so the proffered language is, as you see here, for the purposes of this section, "unattended" means and includes the following: a tethered dog that is not being watched or looked after by a caretaker in immediate vicinity. Immediate vicinity means within, and the Police Department has suggested 35 feet as being the requested language here. So any dog where the caretaker is not in the immediate vicinity, that being 35 feet, or a tethered dog that is abandoned, or a tethered dog that is unaccompanied and not within eyesight of a caretaker. These options were proffered, recognizing that more often than not, a complaint might be coming from a citizen, but it also gives the officer an opportunity to come up on the scene, make their own independent observations, and then go about determining whether or not this is a matter for enforcement. As Dr. Patton has said, Assistant Chief is here and Captain Bozeman are here if you all have any questions. Again, this was set up in this particular fashion, should you all choose to support one, two, or three of these subsections, if that's your choice, or however you wish to proceed.
Question I have is, I agree with the 35-foot, but nothing specifying that the individual has to be outside with the dog. And inevitably, somebody is going to take a tape measure and run it from their recliner, and they can see out the window 35 foot to the dog. So I think it needs to specify that they need to be outside within 35 feet of the dog.
Does Item 3 or Subparagraph 3 trump that, that it's got to be within eyesight?
Well, but eyesight, you can see them out the window. And if I'm in 35, if I measured 35 feet and I'm looking out the window, you know, nothing's specifying that the individual has to be outside.
I think it poses a loophole by leaving it like that. I agree with my colleague. I think it needs to be, I think the person has to be within the vicinity and within eyesight.
I mean, if we'd said, has to be outside within 35 feet, some way to change that because somebody's going to argue that 35 feet, I can be in eyesight and be inside of the house within 35 feet. And I'm sure somebody will come up with that.
I'm all right with outside. I think that removes the.
Because when we had the discussion before, that was what was brought up. If somebody was outside working in their flower bed, they would have reason to be tethered. But we don't want to expand it, you know, to have somebody the option to try to get into that loophole.
Good point. Any comments, Dr. Whitaker?
Well, Steve, what's the difference between point number three, where you say a tethered dog that is unaccompanied and not within eyesight, and a tethered dog that is not being watched or looked at? And I guess, I guess, what do you mean by unaccompanied?
These were designed, one, to try to address a number of scenarios. One, you have the person who goes in to use the bathroom while the dog is out back. One of the scenarios I discussed with the police officer, you have your dog out back on the backside of the house, and you're on the front side of the house. Again, this sort of addressed this particular issue that you all are discussing today. In either of those scenarios, we have presented these options, at least as a first option, so that the officer can come and investigate that scenario, and it gives them the discretion to determine whether or not we have a dog tethered with no one in the vicinity, or someone who just went in the bathroom, someone who has a dog out back and went around to the front of the house to get the mail. A neighbor may have made the call, but again, you have the officer who can come, post themselves there for five minutes, 10 minutes, see what's going on, and then react. I do agree with you, if you're sitting in the house, in that scenario, they're probably going to knock on the door and see what is the actual situation. And then you may have a, I wouldn't necessarily call it a loophole, but there may be a judgment call in that scenario for that situation.
Well, the question I'm asking, what's, what's the difference, what do you mean by unaccompanied in this statute? When you said it, when it's unaccompanied versus a tethered dog that is not being watched, what's the?
We're talking about, the issue is whether or not there's someone, and essentially, this may be semantics, but, and that's why we have placed a different definition in each because you can certainly determine whether or not one is unaccompanied or uncared for either by the distance of that caretaker or whether or not they're in eyesight. And so that's why I said at the beginning, you may choose to pick one of these definitions and eliminate one other part. But it really depends on the scenarios you all are trying to cover for.
The reason I'm asking also is because it was just brought up that you have to be outside. And so, so does unaccompanied, does that mean that the owner is not outside? I mean, does that incorporate what council is concerned with?
That was not a consideration when that was written, in terms of that, because I understood full well that you're going to have a scenario where somebody's likely to walk in the house for some period of time. And so within this, as I said, it left some level of discretion, as these are written, they left some level of discretion. If council wants to tighten it up in terms of putting the person outside, we're still going to have an issue because it's going to depend on who the reporter is, how long they've sat there and watched that scenario, and whether the person is inside or outside. Those are legitimate conditions to put on it. But we did not put, you know, six or seven scenarios. We thought that these three elements were restrictive enough, but enforceable in terms of a short commitment of time with regard to law enforcement.
Well, I would, I would suggest the concern about the owner being present, I think the language "unaccompanied" incorporates that because if the owner is not present, then the dog is unaccompanied. And then you don't get into having the measurement of feet and getting into that type of discretion.
Dr. Patton?
Yeah, I was, we've been talking about this. I think I'm a neighbor and I see the dog, but I don't know that and did not see that the owner has just gone in the backyard. There's a call or something. The police comes. Once the police comes, I come from around the backyard. At that second that the neighbor saw it, the dog is unaccompanied. But I just moved when the neighbor saw me and thinking, my dog is out there by itself. And so the police will determine, this dog is really not unaccompanied. The neighbor's moving, working in the yard, the dog is in the yard, but the owner is not right in the eyesight. So I agree that this, how it is, gives the Police Department room for making their decisions on whether it's, is there an issue that really needs to be dealt with as it pertains to tethering? And the feat may complicate it even more. And I guess Bozeman, Captain Bozeman is somebody, Mayor may be able to speak to that.
Well, the issue I have is originally, we were looking at no tethering. And so we were looking at no tethering, and we were comparing to what other localities and what their rules are. And then that's when we were looking at issues of timelines and how long they could be tethered. But then if they took them in the house for five minutes, came back out, the time started again. So, you know, we're trying to make it a way that they can have them out there and a dog, but we had a dog with them in the yard, working in the yard, but we don't want to make it to have the issue that we had before because they couldn't prosecute because they couldn't sit there and watch all day. So I think it needs to be somewhat restrictive, very restrictive, that that person needs to be within a certain proximity of that dog and outside with the dog. Because if we don't keep it that restrictive, it's almost going back to the way it was before, that the police won't have what they need to prosecute. So if, you know, we're trying to make it an option there that it's not no tethering at all, then I think we need to be very restrictive and have it very explicit in the code section so people know, if you're not doing this, you're in violation. So that way, it is enforceable because the goal is to prevent these dogs from being left alone in the yards. And that's the intent behind it.
It almost sounds like we're trying to protect the person tethering the dog instead of protecting the dog. And I'd rather have no tethering. And I'd rather have no tethering than this language that no police officer in the world's going to be able to enforce any of this. You know, within 35 feet, you can be sitting in your den watching a football game, and your dog can be within 35 feet out in the backyard in some cases. So, I'd rather have no tethering than ambiguous language that a police officer is not going to be able to enforce.
Any reaction to Bill's comment? Yes, sir.
Well, I thought that this was initially brought up by Peter.
That's the case.
They came, sent a letter and came before counsel.
Right, and Peter's concern was the fact that dogs were being tethered. And so, was there some type of issue that citizens were complaining about as far as dogs being tethered, or is this a Peter motivated issue?
The original request and letter came from Peter, and then the spokesperson was from Peter during a council meeting.
Now, I think they had some examples locally.
From some years ago.
So, I guess, does counsel, does counsel feel that tethering is a problem?
Yeah.
Yes.
That tethering dogs is a problem?
Yes, I do.
So, if, if a person wants to go outside and do some work, and they just want to tie the dog to a pole while they're working in the garden, you would have a problem with that?
No, that's, that's what, that's what, you know, my issue was, is that's why we were making the exemption, so they could do that, as opposed to not doing zero tethering. And that's, you know, it's just gotten broader than that to where it's making it harder.
That's my point. So, you're not against tethering, man?
Not being accompanied.
So, tethering is not the issue.
Unaccompanied tethering. It is if, if the owner of the dog's not within the present, presence of the dog.
Right. So, if that's, if that's your only issue, that you want the owner to be somehow responsible, then what's wrong with the suggestion as far as unaccompanied?
May I have my mic?
May.
And if that's the case, certainly, and this was the purpose of this, this is not, this is why this is before you. If it's the council's will, we can eliminate one, and you'll be, you'll have an ordinance that just deals with Section 2 and 3, which is abandoned, which has to be a determination by the police officer, or tethered, unaccompanied, and not within our sight of the caretaker, which would be essentially not within our sight of the caretaker. It still provides some level of discretion with the police officer, but it does eliminate the issue of, of sitting in your house, which was some consideration in terms of trying to put a foot limit into it if somebody walked into the house and went into the bathroom. That was the ultimate scenario that was contemplated and part of that. That does eliminate part of that. But there again, this is the language that's being presented. If you have an option in terms of editing this language that would more fit your will, we can do some editing to what's presented.
Let's get a sense of where we are. Is there any desire to eliminate tethering altogether?
I lean that way. I would support no tethering.
I like 3. I like it to say something like a tethered dog that is unaccompanied within a certain 35 feet sounded good, because I'm thinking football field, we don't want it 50 feet, we don't want it 25 feet, so that is unaccompanied within 25 feet and eyesight of the caretaker.
Okay.
I'm good with what the city attorney presented.
Okay.
I'm fine with what the city attorney just said, Option 2 and 3, that's defining unattended.
The only issue I have with Number 3, where it says a tethered dog that is unaccompanied and not within eyesight, that makes it two elements you've got to create, because what does unaccompanied mean, because not within eyesight? I could be across the street and 100 yards away and be in eyesight. So, that's something that would be very hard to prosecute, because you have to meet both of those elements. So, you know, I would like, you know, what they just said as far as, you know, accompanied within so many feet, and that way, it limits them to that close proximity. And if, you know, we can't get somewhere that restrictive, then, you know, like Councilman Moody said, I would rather go with the no tethering if we don't have something that the police can enforce.
Yeah, within eyesight, you're looking out your window.
Yeah.
And you're within eyesight.
Okay. Dr. Whitaker?
Well, Steve, I thought we were trying to make sure that the owner is responsible, and I think if they're within eyesight of the dog, that they're being responsible, and that would be a call for the police to make on that issue.
I think what I'm hearing is that we need to fine-tune, I ask you to fine-tune this to make it clear that the owner has to be accompanying the dog within a specified number of feet. Is that correct?
And outside, so they can't use that distance to be indoors.
The, the feet limitation, I'm not, I think what the eyesight, yeah, I think measurement...
Eyesight and outdoors would suffice.
But that would allow me to be across the street in the neighbor's yard within eyesight. That's, that's where I have the issue with it, because, you know, you could conceivably say half a mile.
So, if I have my dog outside tethered, and I just walk and talk to my neighbor, and it's 35 feet, but I'm 40 feet, and the police happen to come by, that would be a violation of the code.
Well, but that's, the police officers still have discretion at that point. The only time they don't have discretion is if it was a felony or domestic assault. So, there is discretion that's built into the code, whether they, you know, they could give the wrong person, individual, and explain the code. They don't necessarily have to cite them at that point in time, so they still have discretion.
That's where I would have an enforcement issue, when we start putting feet, when you start having specific measurements, and then it becomes discretion. I think there's going to be discretion, and it ought to be a little flexibility.
And I think a police officer is going to use common sense and look at the dog. If he sees a dog that's tethered and the grass is worn down to the dirt, and the dog's not in good condition, that, I think the police officer would say, "That dog is tethered all the time, not just when the owner's out picking the tomatoes or cutting the grass."
Let me ask this, this question. We want the city attorney to bring back two versions, one with a distance and one without a distance?
That's what we have named.
I think, I think Option 2 and Option, well, my opinion, Option 2, I'm with what Mr. Chair said, Option 2 and 3 is what the attorney recommended. I'm fine with that.
All right, 2 and 3. Are you good with 2 and 3, Nate?
I mean, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's the only issue I have as far as what the distance would be because of the eyesight, but the point is, is having them outside with the dog. And, you know, I still would like to at least see, if we're just going to go with eyesight, not a number of feet, I would still like it to say that they must be outside with the dog. So, the eyesight without the distance doesn't allow them to be in the house.
Okay.
Could you strike eyesight, I mean, if the dog's either accompanied or unaccompanied? And is the definition of unaccompanied strong enough to mean that the owner's got to be outside?
I'd rather have that word "outside."
I would, I would, the issue from an argument standpoint is, unaccompanied and eyesight together make the definition for the purpose of arguing to the judge, whether or not there's a level of control with regard to that dog, and whether or not there's an issue. If you remove that, we're totally arguing unaccompanied, and that does create a lot of latitude in terms of folks trying to define that. So, a distance is one issue. Unaccompanied is an issue of control and determination, and eyesight is a gauge of that. So, for instance, as one council member said, if, if you're a mile away and you can supposedly see your dog, the police officer certainly has an argument to say, "That dog's not accompanied" if you're a mile away. But if you're across the street and you're within sight, that you can get to your dog if something happens, a judge is more likely to uphold that enforcement. So, it, it does provide in some respect an alternative definition. If you break the two, it kind of loosens that up, in my estimation, in terms of what we do.
Well, could, could you leave both of those and just put the word "outside" there? Because that's my only concern with those two. I could be 20 feet away in the house and still be in eyesight, and that's a close distance, but I'm not outside. And that was, our original intent was to allow people to work in their yard and things like that, and have the pet outside. So, that's what we're trying to get away from, is allowing an individual to be inside and the dog outside alone.
So, so, whether the Army Corps of Engineers is not able to control the mosquitoes at Craney Island, and someone wants to sit on their screen porch and let the dog run outside on the tether pole, they would be in violation of the code under your standard, because they're not outside.
That's correct.
But they would be responsible because they see the dog.
But the whole intent was, we were trying to give people an option, but if we can't come up with option in this wording, then I would rather go back to no tethering at all. And then, that way, if they need to go outside, they can walk the dog outside and bring it back in when they come in, because that's, that's really what we're trying to do, is protect, protect the animals from being left outside alone.
Nate?
I'm still, the city attorney's recommendation 2 and 3 is fine with me. I'm okay with that.
I like 3. I mean, I like 3, but I wanted some distance in there as well, because as I mentioned one time before, I was a victim of a dog bite when I was seven years old, because the dog was tethered and nobody was watching it.
You did say that.
And, you know, so, I would like to have some kind of distance in between them and being able to be within eyesight. So, I like, I like 3.
Just got to have outside.
Assistant Chief, here's a comment.
Captain Bozeman and I...
Can you come to the lectern, please?
Evening, everyone. So, Captain Bozeman and I were discussing this, and with the help of some other folks in the gallery, no tethering unless accompanied outside by the owner and within 35 feet of the owner. No tethering unless accompanied outside by the owner and within 35 feet of the owner.
I'm all right with that.
Yes, that, that meets. That meets.
I don't see the necessity of, I mean, what 35 feet? Where do you get 35 feet from? It's too arbitrary.
One, one aspect of 35 feet is, I know that term, that measurement has come up before, because if you're talking about large dogs, the length of the tether, I believe, is supposed to be pretty close to 35 feet for a large dog. It's the, three times the length, and there's some latitude beyond that. So, I've heard that term before, if I'm not mistaken, that, that's where that particular amount comes out. With regard to the first section, of course, that was contemplated, given the size of, you know, a modest average yardage in Portsmouth is not, from, from back of the fence to the house is not going to be more than 35 feet. There's, you know, we certainly have some larger properties that are bigger, but generally, it's back of the house to the back of the fence in some average-sized homes in Portsmouth.
Nate, you want to comment on what the chief recommended?
That's fine. I'm also, you know, I can go with what the attorney recommended, or what he recommended. You know, you, we're sitting there trying to, trying to put this thing in a box, and you can't get, there's no perfect, there's no perfect answer here. Police officers always going to have to make a judgment call, and what the city attorney presented, gives that, so that you're trying to make this, make this thing perfect, and we're not, we're not going to do it, because who, they're going to walk out with a yardstick and say this is 35 feet?
No.
Y'all carrying 35-foot...
Traffic unit has 300-foot tape measures, so I think it'll be good.
So, you know, that's not what police officers do, and this is not, you know, that's not, that's not what we really pay police officers to do. We spend an hour talking about something that they're going to spend very little time...
Well, but the animal control officers who will be responding to this, and that's what their mission is.
Nate, he was talking to me, and I was responding to him.
Oh, that's fine. I was just making a point.
Let me do that, okay?
Carry on.
So, what the chief says is fine, but I'm also good with what the city attorney presented. We asked him to come back and do it, he brought it back to us, and so, that's where I'm at, Mayor.
Okay. Well, it looks like to me that we've got...
I'm all right with what the chief presented.
I'm okay with the chief. So, let's bring that language back.
We will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, no problem.
Yeah. Dr. Patton has brought up a question about September the 11th.
You want to speak to it?
No, yes, please.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I called to the city, to the mayor's attention and to the city clerk's attention that we have a scheduled work session on September 11th. And in the past two years, I came in 2015, the recognition of the ceremony for September 11th in 2015 was at 10 o'clock in the morning. Citizens could not attend. Our recognition this past year was 2 o'clock in the afternoon. Citizens could not attend. And previous, the city had been noted for having an evening ceremony where citizens could attend. And so, I was asked, and I, by more than one citizen, what were we planning for September 11th? And I shared, "We have a council meet, a public work session on the Monday night that would start at 6 o'clock." And so, I just brought it to the mayor and city council's attention as to what is your desire. We could have a day, as we've done before, where citizens are not able to attend, because it's during the day and people at work. But in the evenings, in the past, when I was here and we had an evening ceremony, we had very good participation. We had a candlelight visual, so I'm sure some of you over here remember the kinds of, of remembrances. And then, some share, "It's a solemn day," which it is, it's, you know, it will always be. So, just present it to you for your determination.
What would you like to do?
Can we do something in conjunction prior to the, the meeting? I mean, is that the, I want to understand what you're advocating?
The, the request is, do we meet on the 11th, or do we host a ceremony in the, it really was around the 6 o'clock time that we usually hosted it?
What Bill is asking is, does it have to be an either-or? Can it be both?
Yeah, exactly.
It's council's desire, whatever you all desire to do.
Okay. Nate, you look like you want to speak.
Well, yeah, I mean, I couldn't see us doing it before, then we get back into the same thing, people working, couldn't attend. So, if we try to do both, we could do the work session first and have the ceremony starting at some time beyond it, would be the only way to do the two, you know, listening to what Dr. Patton's saying as far as, so we can have the participation of the citizens after they get off of their workday.
City clerk will...
You want to speak up?
Who you all would like.
Okay. Here's an option, we could start our work session at 5, limit it to an hour and a half, and have the vigil, or the function, whatever you come up with, at 6:30 or 7:00.
Okay.
Is that...
I'm good with that.
Yes. Am I good with that?
We'll just change what we're going to do. Okay. Thank you.
So, you need to take action to advertise that?
It's just a adjustment of the time, and we'll do that with the call letter.
Okay. All right. I think that's it. We do have a need to go on closed session.
I didn't review the city manager's report quickly. Vice Mayor, members of council, tonight on the city manager's report, you have a donation, Portsmouth Department of Social Services, a $6,000 donation that's coming in from Green Acres Presbyterian Church, and the purpose of that donation is... And the purpose of that donation is to provide food for the social services pantry. The next item will be FY '18 Community Corrections Pretrial Service Program, adoption of an ordinance, accepting a grant for $556,729 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Service. And this goes toward the community corrections and pretrial services that works with probation, supervision, community service, work restitution, substance abuse assessment and testing and treatment, anger, education, domestic violence, and intervention. We have the sheriff inmate telephone commission, of which the adoption of an ordinance for $33,675 to the telephone commission revenue, and that goes into the sheriff's office general fund budget. And they can use that funds for their academy. Adoption of an ordinance except $84,051 received by the Circuit and General District Courts, and to appropriate the said amount to the general fund for use by the sheriff's office for items needed to support the sheriff's office training academy. And they actually receive $5 per conviction. That is how the funds are accumulated. The next item is a daily living activities instrument, of which Behavioral Health Care has received $1,054 for a consultant to review, and it will be actually one day, the daily functional assessment training, or the daily living activities for those who are part of the daily living program through Behavioral Health Care. The next two items are funds for, and grants for, from the Virginia opioid prevention, $89,298 to provide peer recovery and other services to assist those fighting opioid addiction. Currently, the department works with Bon Secours, and we do have a peer recovery specialist that is located at Bon Secours. With this money, they will be able to receive two more recovery specialists. And these specialists are people who help in recovery from mental illness and substance abuse through their, use of their personal recovery success. And the peer councils must be in remission, I guess, for at least a two-year period before they can qualify for a peer assistance counselor. And the next one is $113,759 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health Care and Development Services for opioid treatment. And that concludes our city manager's report for tonight's meeting.
Do we need to have a future discussion to get a feel for the order of magnitude of the opioid situation?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to suggest to you and members of council that I bring forth not only behavioral health care, but also social services, so that you all can get an update at the magnitude of the challenges we're facing.
Everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Can they compare, not just for opioids, but?
Well, they're going to, the whole, yeah, yeah, they're going to talk about the whole program, yeah.
Good. If you'll put that.
I shall.
For the fall.
That concludes my report.
All right. And we have a proclamation tonight for National Night Out?
Yes, sir.
This is for the citywide?
Yes, sir. And they will be sharing all of the various activities that will be going on throughout the city, because they have quite a few, and that was one of the major reasons we thought it would be good to have that up here.
Okay. So I'll read the proclamation, present it, and then invite her to give comments about it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. All right, now, we need a motion to go into closed session.
I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A1 for the purpose of discussion, consideration, and interviews of potential candidates for appointment to boards and commissions.
Does she have a second?
Second.
And the motion, and the second. Madam Porter, you called the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Semus?
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Row.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we're in closed session.